I need the batteries. There's one over there.
Wow.
I don't think there's any on this wall.
It's 10 o'clock before we get started. We're going to start with roll call. Commissioner Yower?
Here.
Commissioner Wazalis?
Here.
Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Schimbel?
Here.
Commissioner DuBuck?
Here.
Please stand for the opening prayer and state your claim of allegiance.
Everybody, Father, we thank you for all our blessings. We thank you for the freedom we enjoy in this country. We thank you for the troops that protect us and all the other law enforcement that protects us and our freedom. We ask that you bless us this day and every day that we make our decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is to open and read aloud RFPs for oil and gas minimums proposal for 18.77 acres of land, more or less situated in the town side of Karnes County, Karnes County. Bid for accepted up until 10 o'clock this morning, and I have only received one. Did anybody else get a bid? Should it come to the county judge's office, or it should have been requested at 1:15 North Market? I'm going to open the one that we have, and I'll read it to you. And we can see this one on 2/19/13, 11:28. The bid is for Marathon Oil for an amount of $5,112 per acre for a total of $95,982.92 with 25 percent royalty. The checks are included as asked. There's a cashier's check for $1,000, excuse me, and one for $95,982.92. That is the only bid we've received. There's not another bid to open. The bid will be awarded at the March 12 meeting. Okay? The next item on the agenda is to discuss approved/disapproved paying auctioneer $750 from the March 9, 2013 auction proceeds. Buy here?
No, she's not.
And what that is, there you are, Julie, thank you. That's right, so these are the day that day. When we do the auction at the courthouse, we have to pay the auctioneer. And so instead of making an amendment or anything else, we're asking to pay out of the process.
I make motion to approve paying auctioneer $750 for March 9, 2013 auction proceeds.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Number seven on the agenda is discuss approved/disapproved the County Road 329 access improvement agreement between Karnes County and Talasman. That's Tracy. It's the same agreement we had on here last time.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from them. I don't know what we need to do.
Except what they're going to do for us.
Well, behalf of how we...
Ma'am, don't you know anything?
I don't know if they told Jeff if they don't do that.
Master, we have my fault. They're still going with the same agreement that we have made with them.
Right.
You know, we just, we would just need to approve it through court.
Yeah.
I like that he can prove it. Come off with the signed campaign. We look at the picture today.
Only change was amazing what Herb's intention didn't put it just because it was the pencil thing. And that was just a reason, a reason, reason.
But then it's got, they need to go towards everything. Like any other all sorts of stuff, whatever. Right. Yeah. It brought us to court this week. So I...
I make the motion to approve. Kind of wrote 329 access improvement agreement between Karnes County and Talasman.
Can I ask you a question? Because we already have it in there. You give me the authority to execute it behind Tracy and Jeff signed it. I think we need an authority to execute, because y'all will allow him that authority?
With that motion, with authority for the judge to execute agreement with Tracy and Jeff. All seconded.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion of the cost, safety issues, declaration of emergency, privacy issues of relocating office of county judge and county extension, and that's James.
Okay. The reason I put, I put this agenda item on here was because the public asked me if I could put this agenda item on here. Now, there's been some people that wanted to speak, and I wanted to recognize the people. That's okay with Commissioners Court?
You can recognize who wants to speak.
Yeah.
Judge, that's okay with everybody?
Okay. One person that wanted to speak was Maria Moore.
Good morning. I'm back again with the same concerns that I had last week. I have concerns for many reasons. I've been involved with Karnes County 4H for 16 years. I was a leader of the Lonesome 4H Club for eight years. My club started the Brendan Machigamba Show Scholarship, and we awarded over $15,000 to Karnes County youth, not just anybody that applied for it, was eligible. I served as the, on the Karnes County Youth Show Board for eight years. I'm a county taxpayer. So I have concerns for multiple reasons. And we would just like some of those concerns addressed, and issued, and some answers. The move is not considered an emergency move. County money is going to have to be paid for the move that has taken place. Furniture, nope. Is there going to be furniture that's going to be bought? Phone lines have to be moved. Computers have to be moved. That's IT. Do we have an IT person that does things for free in Karnes County? No, we don't. That's a bill. Letterhead, stationary. What happens when the courthouse is finished and there's another move? What is the definition of a temporary move? Isn't this a temporary move? So why isn't it an emergency? Why are county tax dollars going to have to be paid? Because I know good and well that no one works for free. There's going to be bills, which I'm sure, I haven't spoke to Luana, but I'm sure what's going to have to, have to happen is, those bills are going to come in. Luana, or Vi, or whoever it is that's responsible for them, they're going to have to be paid, which means the budget's going to have to be amended, so that's going to have to be, am I correct?
Yes.
So guess what? County tax dollars are paying. It's not a free move. And nobody bothered to check with the county constituents that you represent before you did this as an emergency. And we are going to keep coming back. We're not only here last week, and we're not only here today. And it's just going to get to be a larger group, and a larger group, and a larger group. Privacy issues. There has got to be some privacy issues with this. If a child who is a juvenile, on juvenile probation goes to school and tells them, that's his right. But when 4H kids are coming in and out of this building, and they see the kids that are in here on probation, and then they go say something, that is a privacy issue. Has that been addressed? I believe Judge Shaw, that you had a budget item put in the budget for a security officer to be in the round in this building for 24 hours a day. So obviously, you yourself was concerned about safety. Was that, was that ever done? Was there anyone ever taken, put in here for security reasons or around? Yes, no?
No, I'm sorry.
Anybody who's willing to answer?
No, it's, it's not. We weren't, we put it in the budget to hire someone here, but we didn't.
Why not?
Wait a minute. When does she do the job?
No, but not here, right here. He's over here.
So, so there was obviously some concern...
Because she's talking about this building here, not about...
I'm talking about this building.
Okay.
So was there not concern? If you, as a Commissioners Court, if you took it upon yourself to put a budget item in for a security officer for this building, there had to be some concern for safety issues. So why was it never done? So we have Commissioners Court who puts things in the, in the budget, and sometimes things change, but you never address it. And then we have Commissioners Court who votes on things and just spends money without any reason. So y'all must have a great job as Commissioners and Judge.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. And we are Commissioners in a whole, we know where to get it.
Yes, you are. I'm sorry. You're each individuals. And I know that you all don't vote for the same thing.
Exactly. On that, on that issue, on the security, if I can remember, I didn't vote to put a security here. I voted against that. So I can, I can't give you an answer right now, because if I would have voted for it, then I could give you a straight answer of why or when. I can't tell you that one wasn't hired for here. Can't tell you that it did pass when it passed. And I'm not down in the Commissioners Court, because I'm, I'm part of them, and I love them, and we got to work together.
Yes.
But for the public, if the public needs to hear, on my part, I didn't vote for that person, so I can't sit here and tell you why or why not he wasn't ever hired, because, I mean, if I would have voted for it, I would tell you.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, but, and James, I find that you're really the only one who actually speaks to the people and who will listen. So I'm sorry that I'm looking at you and addressing you. I'm addressing everyone.
No, no, I understand. No, I'm not, I would never get offended by the public. No, no problem. That's not a problem at all. That's what I'm here for, I mean. Whatever y'all need to speak to me about, I've always been there.
So, I, you know, what do we have to do to get answers? What is temporary? Where's the money coming from? It's not free, but nobody's going to answer.
Well, Maria, one thing, I want to know something. What is the real issue? Is it because the kids will be coming crossing over here? Or is it because extension service is not part of county government? They are not part of county government. I mean, they provide. And county government is, in my opinion, and I'm the one who voted for the, for this move at the time.
Yes.
And county government is, and that's, to me, that was the reason to put it there. Now, I, I understand, and I, and I, the safety of the kids always concerned me as well. But safety of the kids concern me more at the school than it do in this building. Now, I think quite often, I like to know is how many, how many times kids come into that, or into the extension office.
You would have to ask an extension agent that. I don't, I don't know that.
Do they keep them all?
You'd have to ask the extension agency. I don't know that.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking because...
Well, okay, during the summer...
We're talking about kids processing. I mean, how many, how many kids actually do come? This is my thing.
A lot of kids come, Shelby. You would have to ask them as far as their office. I don't know. I don't, I don't have any privy to their records, and I don't know that. But there are a lot. In the summer, when the kids are out of school, there's a lot more interaction, because there's camps, there's workshops, there's all that kind of stuff. The issue is, as a county taxpayer, this is not an emergency. There was the option to move into that building years ago, and that option was not taken at that time. If this move needs to happen, it needs to be put in the budget that's approved and moved in the fall, whenever a budget takes place. It is not an emergency, and there is no reason for county tax money to pay for this.
See, and then the point, that's where I kind of differ. One, prior to January 1, there wasn't much court being held, correct? Do you agree with that?
Correct.
Okay. Now, after January 1, the county attorney comes in that's willing to hold court, willing to, to move things forward, and the workload gets and increases. And that's evident by what I've read in the paper. Joe Becker's put that in the paper, that there's been like, I think it was last, was it Joe 89, 89 cases were filed during February?
I don't remember the exact number.
There was a large number. I will agree with that.
But, but, and that's something that's starting to increase. Now, if that's the case, do you still want those people coming in here? Why, or do you want them over there, where we can process them and get them, get them out of the way quicker? And, and continue with the government going away? That's one reason that, that was, to me, in my interpretation, was a need, because court has started to expedite more cases. The justice system was moving a little bit faster.
So you're telling me that if the justice system was moving faster two years ago, that move would have happened then? I don't, I don't think so.
I'm going into that, Maria, about why that move didn't happen, okay? I think I did explain one time, the motions were very high, about who was going to get space, and space was a big issue. And not only that, we had, we have elected officials that actually call the cops on each other and stuff. I'm not going to go get involved in anybody's drama. It's not something I want to share. It's not something I want to know. And it's not something I want to be a part of.
But you're going to a drama building?
No.
Oh, yes. You are being moved to a drama building. And if I also remember correctly, it was even stated before that you had an employee that had health issues. There's already bats in that building. So you're...
I think, Maria, if you could go back and watch...
Your employees' health, I've watched them. I have watched the YouTube videos. I have read articles. I have read paper. I've watched it. You, you say one thing, and then the next thing you know, something else is said to counter, counter effect or counteract what you previously said. It's whatever is good for Judge Shaw that day is what, what the move, what the move, what the direction. And county taxpayers should not be paying for this move.
Hey, the B B came down into the special, but the bats in our office were so, they would fly around. Is there bats flying around that building now?
There's bats hanging in there. Enough of them are hanging. If enough of them hang, they're going to start flying.
We had pictures on the wall moving, Maria. That's not normal.
So stay here. There's no bats over here. There's no bats over here. There's no bats flying around in here that are not hanging.
Shelby's question, is extension a function of county government?
Is that only a county building?
Yes.
Is, there's no one else in here that's county?
What do you mean?
In this building?
What do you mean it's not county?
You're, you're alluding to the fact that only county people need to be in that building, correct?
No. I said it's not a function of county government. Our files are there. That's where we want, that's where we should be.
Oh, okay. It is functioning. You've been having court. It doesn't matter how...
No, Maria, we have not been having court. Don't turn that around.
Did you have court last fall?
We might have had it, but you...
No. Did you have court last fall?
If you want to call that court.
It was a functioning county. You had court last fall, and you were, you were housed over here.
No, it was not. It was not functioning.
Even though extension may not be described as a part of county government, it is still partially funded by the county.
Correct. The argument that you had did not have a functioning, you didn't have a functioning court or system because of disagreements of you and our county attorney at that time. That, that didn't have anything to do with not having a functioning court. If you held court, you had a functioning court system. May not have been exactly how you wanted it to function, but you had a functioning system. If the move has to happen, which it already has, but if the move has to happen, it has to happen. But county tax paying money should not be used to make, to pay for and fund this move, because it's convenient right now. Which by the looks of things in here, it wasn't even convenient. People aren't even moved out of offices where other people are moving into offices. So how are county extension even supposed to function with their stuff in boxes? If I'm not mistaken, J D is in Houston this week, because of course, judging or something. So he's not even here. So moved Friday, he had to move. Who knows where any of this stuff is? And now he's not even here to even attempt to get an office set up. That, that's not functioning.
January 31, the Commissioners Court moved to make the move.
Yes, I saw that.
January 31.
Yes.
And so that was ample time for everybody to prepare, correct?
No, it wasn't.
Why not?
We're going to be Commissioners Court asking to vote to have him moved to...
Did Commissioner, no, did, did Commissioners Court at that time address that it was going to be the extension office? Did they notify the extension office of packing and moving? And my big beef, Shelby, is taxpayer money. You approved it as Commissioners Court to do the move, but there was no approval for taxpayer money to pay for this move.
Did the...
That's what we, that's...
Did the extension supervisor notify this money?
He's been here numerous times. He's walked in here, he's kind of visited the...
Take extension out of this. Taxpayer money. No taxpayer money was approved for this move when you voted to make the move. So where is the taxpayer money going to come from, other than when, when the budget has to be amended?
It's, it's not illegal, and we will take it, we will take all the legal advice from Mr. Handcock or Dent Navarro. And Dent Navarro has wrote an opinion. I will provide it to you on March 12. It did not come in in time to be on this agenda, but I will provide it, and we can read it. If y'all will wait that right to read it then. We cannot make that decision today. And we spend more money on legal fees protecting this county from those that want to tear it up than on anything.
Well, I assure you, I'm not trying to tear it up. I'm trying to protect the county money as a county taxpayer, that it's not frivolously and needlessly spent for things that don't need to be at the mere convenience...
There's a great public necessity to prosecute cases.
You can prosecute. This doesn't have anything to do with not prosecuting. Has nothing to do with it.
I think, I'm sorry.
No.
Judges, Commissioners, I think from what I've been talking to a lot of taxpayers, and they've been calling me the, and not just from my precinct, from all precincts, you know, I am county commissioner, so that, and it's precinct three, but still county is the title, so I talk with everyone. And I think the main concerns they're having is the cost, of course, that it's going to cost the taxpayers, and I understand that. Another issue was, has been brought up to me quite a bit, is about the bat situation. You know, we moved, we moved one office over because of bats, but now we're moving back into bats. I don't know how many bats there is in there, but I have been told there's bats hanging, they're flying.
Has anybody addressed them? It's first I've heard of bats. Has anybody...
I heard, I heard about it last week.
Yes, Shelby, it was addressed. I, I called Pete when we had the bat meeting.
I was, I was talking about it last week. Another, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Another thing, a concern was about the children. I know that, that 4H children, about coming in here in this facility and all, but there's also the juvenile children too, the privacy that they have too. They should both have privacy, because even though a child may end up getting in DAP or here in, in this facility here, for troubles, he should have privacy from the other children from the school. Because I, I really do think that that might be an issue that might get into the school system later on. One kid might say, hey, well, I seen this one here. Somebody might see one of these kids walk in, and they haven't gotten in trouble to be in here, and it might be just reflected on him that he had gotten in trouble. Again, the kids that are already in here, they don't need other kids going to school and saying, ha, 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 I seen you over there and that. It's going to, to me, it's bad on both ways. You know, because they're all children. All children are going to rag on each, not rag, but you know what I mean, like, you know, like, tell each other BS. You know, they're kids, but they're, one's going to say, yeah, I seen you in there. They want to say, yeah, yeah, you go in there too, because you were seen there. For whatever reason it is, I can't, I don't have all the answers. But I really, really think that it's not just for the 4H, it's also for the, the kids that are in here. They should all, they should, they're all children, they're all are children, irregardless. They're children from Karnes County, and maybe from Toronto County, but they're still children. None of them should, are better than the others or whatever. They're all are children, and they should be treated equally. They should both have the privacy.
Bottom line, county tax money is being done. Whether it's a privacy issue, a commingling issue...
Yes.
A bad idea, whatever. It's county money that was not alloweded that... And Judge, you were going, you had, you in, on January 31, on the, on YouTube video, Commissioner Yower and Commissioner DuBuck, there wouldn't be a cost, if I remember correctly, and I even have the paper back there. You yourself said, it's not going to cost anything. They volunteered to help me move. It is going to cost. There's other things other than packing and moving. I'm sure there was even probably a few county employees that were pulled from their normal duties, so that salary now, that county money, that our money is being used to help pack and move. It wasn't free. I don't think that this was very well thought out. And it's not fair for us to have to pay for something that was a mere convenience for
Thank you, ma'am. I have some names here written out. I don't know if anybody wants to speak, but I have Krista Duke, Sheriff Purser, Trooper Pierce, Courtney Hodges.
Trooper Pierce?
Jim Pierce.
I think he's a trooper Pierce.
He's retired trooper.
Okay. Well, retired, current deputy sheriff, right?
Current deputy sheriff.
Taxpayer.
Well, that's fine. I'm just making sure he gets the right title. I don't want Jim to get credit for something, you know, he's retired, or he's deputy sheriff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe my mistake. I thought since he was retired trooper, he could be called Trooper Pierce. That's my mistake. I apologize. If it is a mistake, I apologize.
Whoever you are, would you like to speak?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So none of the people that I, nobody else wants to speak? Maurice Yarder, I'm sorry.
First, Judge Shaw made a point. You know she was encouraged.
This is all regarding the situation, okay?
Even, even Mr. Busman, encouraged to join the planning process, you know this, Pete, to join the process, and has space allocated for her in that new annex. She resisted to the point that you cannot believe, to the point that she said, not now, not ever. I'd never move the annex. Secondly, Mr. DuBuck, you represent Precinct 1. Well, I'm representing voters of Precinct 1. I haven't talked to a single voter in Precinct 1 that is going along with this move or Judge Shaw's move to the annex. You're supposed to be voting for me and our, and the other voters of Precinct 1, not getting along with Judge Shaw and doing something for convenience.
One thing, Mr. Yarder, I want to tell you right now. My phone number is in the book. Nobody's ever called me.
You've never called anybody else here?
Yes, I've talked to several people.
And who are they?
You tell them yours first.
I got the Senate Representative's notice. Bottom line is, this is a convenience. Next, you should look at the agenda item that approved this move. Where did it approve the move to? Not to this building. You say you follow the law? That's the law. If you want to move here, you need to put it back on the agenda. And I'll bring you a list of people from Precinct 1 that do not agree with this move. As far as the expenditures, I don't care what a law firm says. The law that regards an emergency amendment to budgets is very narrow. And the reason for that is to prevent the treasury being used as a flesh part, simply because somebody gets an idea, they didn't have the foresight to look, to bring into the budget process. Whether court was being handled or not, the budget process is separate entities. I listen to a good part of it. Simply because, simply because you didn't think of it, weren't smart enough for it, didn't do the research for it, didn't ask other people for their input, that does not constitute an emergency. I have a copy of the law right here. It's less than about eight sentences a paragraph, and there's nothing about this or the amendment that you approved to purchase a, a copier and computers for the county attorney. Judge Shaw took it upon herself in the budget process to strip the county attorney's budget on her own. She was questioned about it, it's on the record. So removing simply because she's changed her mind does not constitute an emergency. And you should comply with what you approved, which is to move the county extension agent to the tax office annex, however it does be ADA compliance, you're just gonna have to wait. There's no, there's no emergency that she asked in that, in the, uh, in the annex building. She didn't want to go there in the first place, what changed her mind? I think there are a lot of people that might have that answer, that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Yarner. I also, you know, I've been here fourteen years, or I wasn't, just fourteen years. And I worked with Judge Shaw, Judge Pavillik, and Judge.
Kendall.
Kendall. And when, when the Judge Pavillik was here, we had court twice a week, twice a week. Uh, Judge Shaw came on scene and we had it twice a month, once, twice a month. And I asked many times for additional dates so we could get rid of some of the, and I'm aware, believe me, I'm aware, you don't have to keep telling me that I, I was aware of the backlog. Now, I also was here long enough to see how Judge Shaw thinks. I'm gonna tell you about two occasions. One occasion, I came in here to county court and Judge Shaw told me that there was going to be no continuances on, in that, in her court that day, but you can't do that. The judge is supposed to be here, listen to all the complaints and make a decision. You can't decide three months ago that we're not going to have any continuances on a particular court date. It's kind of, you just can't do that. One time I came in here and she told me that unless she was in on a plea bargain, she was not going to honor it. Well, you can't do that either for several reasons. One, the judge is supposed to be neutral, does not have an opportunity or anything else to look at the offense reports or any other reports. And still, so what I had to do is I took people, when I talked to the people, I took them in her office and she sat there and listened for about two times, and then she said, you don't have to do this anymore. But that's the kind of, that's the kind of thinking that she has been doing and is going to continue on doing that so long as you follow blindly behind and say, I agree, that's wrong, it's just not correct. This cost of this move had to have been in the agenda or on the budget, or it's just, I don't care about the, I don't care about the, uh, uh, law, the, the law firm gave you some sort of something or another, I don't care about that. The law is very simple, it says you can't do that unless it's a grave necessity, and this is not a grave necessity. Frankly, I care, I was in court, I, I, my office was in a courthouse. We had the smell of bats, we had bats. Out of my own pocket, I went and bought a HONIC air cleaners. My secretary at the time had a lot of issues with taking decongestants and so forth. And after I put the decon, the, the air cleaners in the courthouse, it would have been on Friday afternoon after work, and I paid for it. And, uh, on Monday, when we came back, Belinda, uh, Belinda was her name, her allergies had gone away. It was coming from the smell of the bats or something from the bats. We had the bats there, the bats were in Judge, in, in Judge Pavillik's office, Judge Kendall's office, all this time, and we did, we did, we did what we had to do to have court, we had court twice a week. So where is the problem here? Where is the problem? I think the problem here is that we have a judge who thinks her powers are absolutely unlimited, and that's not true. She's a narcissist, and I've heard her talk about my people, my roads, that's not our roads, it's the county's roads, and you people need to wake up. Now, the other thing, I know that you're gonna have to have some money, whether there is a case filed in district court, that's where it goes, to stop this money, what are you gonna do? Move all this stuff back? What are you gonna do?
Before y'all mention that question, Dittenbauer has provided this brief legal opinion, and that is, we use Dittenbauer and Mr. Hancock will be our legal opinions in this matter.
And I certainly hope his opinion is correct, I don't see how it can be in light of the law.
It usually is.
There's a public issue, you not.
In a way. And I have been blamed for a lot of stuff that I didn't do.
Okay, so we're back to the.
And we'll cover that later. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosales, can I, can I have someone to speak, please?
Yes, ma'am, I'll work mine.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm, I'm Phyllis Cowsy, Judge Shaw, Commissioner Kendall, Commissioner Dupe, Commissioner Rosales, Commissioner Yarner. I am a concerned citizen, but I'm here for the children, okay? But I'm also here for the extension agent. Um, I know he probably agreed for this move because this is his job and he doesn't want to lose it. But we're taxpaying citizens, and I'm concerned about, I don't care with this oil boom and with all the income that's coming in, this is their agricultural county, and you don't believe how much business goes through with the farmers and the ranchers and all of you sitting there have been at one time a farmer or a rancher or done something in the county for this. I, I've watched over some of the video of the last commissioner courts, and two questions. Uh, a temporary move, this is temporary, correct? Temporary to you is what? Three months, six months, three years? What's temporary? Do we have anything in play that's going to say that this will be eventually office be moved? I understand that it was said that we want to be moved back, is this correct, Ms. Judge Shaw? Back into the office that we had at first, but it's not compliance, handicap accessory? So an elevator will be installed? Is that correct?
Well, an elevator is going to be restored regardless of who went in there, because it's not ADA compliant.
Okay, have we moved forward with that already? Okay. And it's, the building's capable of putting in an elevator, we're on the move, it's in our budget to do this?
We have money, I'll address that.
Okay. And so that's my concern, I'm looking at a time span. You know, temporary can be temporary, but temporary sometimes ends up being five, six years down the road. But you're also talking about more taxpaying money again. Temporary three months, here we go, we're gonna move again.
You, you also know that juvenile probation was slated to move, is slated to move in that office once the courthouse is, juvenile would still be in there. You know that TDC inmates are in that building, you know all that kind of stuff too, right?
And which building?
The other building.
Oh, you mean at the annex building? Oh, well, yes, I understand that, but we also have different entrances that we're not having, and when I've been there, you better believe when I've gone to the county extension office with my daughter and they're holding court and you've got prisoners in there, yes, I feel unsafe, but there's law enforcement, there's law enforcement, and I felt the most secure here. I'm, I love all the children and I'm not labeling the children that are here in the probation office, okay? I'm not gonna label them, because everyone makes mistakes and everyone deserves a second chance. But I am concerned about the mingling, and like you said, children are cruel, children will say things and say, oh, oh, I saw your daughter, oh, I saw her at the probation office. Where do you think that's gonna go? It puts a label on them.
They're outside working, we'll see them everywhere, how can you miss these children?
Will they have to come in and sign in and my daughters come in at the same time they are?
I mean, they're, you can tell, they're in fatigue, you see who they are. And they're usually not here anymore here in the day, and Niva's out there, if y'all like to ask Niva about it.
Okay, well, but what I'm saying is temporary, I'm ready, I'm excited that this is just a temporary move, but I'd like a time span. And if you, if you could address that time span, I think, that would kind of relieve a little.
We don't have a time span. We had in the budget to put an elevator in the building and stairways. So we find out, hopefully if we put an elevator in there and stairways, so no one in there now, we're gonna have to redo the restroom, ADA compliant, that's gonna require we move the ductwork, we're gonna have to have two stairways, because you can't have just one stairway entrance exit in case there's a fire. That's new ADA compliant, which I was not familiar with, and, uh, elevator people didn't tell me anything about it, and I didn't discuss it further enough with the architect in on beforehand, we thought we'd be keeping up. All right, so we have Maureen Data and her assistant.
Mr. Dari, if Mr. Busman and Ms. Yarner would like to visit, can you please take them outside so they can visit? Mrs. Yarner has mumbled the whole time and I can't hear.
Okay. Maureen Data and Catherine Lundquist, who's the building, they're supposed to get back to the building, what they think it would cost to do that. We had $65,000 now, I know we don't have that in the budget for this year to get that done. So if it comes up, if we want to do that, we're gonna have to amend the budget to get that done. I was asked by Mr. Hancock, you think there's any room in the new building for me to get in there? We're gonna have all this court and the records are there, and I'd like to have there, and I'd have to run back and forth, I said, well, I'll find out. So I asked around, came up with, in fact, he told me, he said, well, DPS has empty space there, and we talked to them, so I talked to Mr. Data, and I talked to Mr. Babe together, uh, Mr. Trooper Babe together, and he said, yeah, he has the space in that office, we have two officers that are not here, I'm not gonna hit them very soon. So they made an agreement to use some of the DPS office space. And so having court there, Judge Shaw said, well, I want to move over there too, we're gonna have court all time, we have all these cases. So I talked to JD and he said, well, it may have been better if I'd never moved back up the building, but I realize y'all need the space in this county and y'all put them where you want them. So I came back here and I talked to Niva Smith, and she said, she didn't see any conflict, that, uh, there was nothing illegal about having the kids in the same building, uh, but she didn't think they'd be here at the same time anyway. So the kids are always gone by time before H come in in the evenings, they come in at evening, she said, and they had proof that my kids won't be here. So they're all in agreement that it could work. And Ag Extension could be in this building with juvenile probation without conflict.
Temporary, she's still having, but we don't have a time span.
And so, and I told JD, we're gonna get that, and at that time, I didn't know about the ADA or anything else for that, we hadn't, hadn't talked to the architect when I found out all that, and now we know it's gonna take longer to get to that, and we thought maybe in six months we can have that baby in the field.
But we're still not having anything in the budget, excuse me, I'm sorry, nothing in the budget to finish to get that moved down for a year? Are we working that for a year?
Well, that I don't know, we have to see what it's gonna cost, and it's up to the commission court to decide, are we gonna amend the budget to get that elevator in there as quickly as possible? If they can, and there's a, the other thing about the two stairs, it's hard to get two stairs in there, you have to put a stairs coming out on Calvert Street on the outside of the building, there's not room in the back, it'd be too close to the other stairways. So, uh, they have to, they're supposed to look at it and, and get back and tell me what they propose, how we could get made an ADA compliant.
And do they have a time span to do that, sir?
I haven't given them any time limit, no, I have not, but, uh.
Cause then again.
I will check with them.
Temporary, we get moved, there's more taxpaying money that goes for another move.
And it's temporary, uh, as far as y'all wanna know about temporary, the judge's office and county attorney's office and the district clerk's office are all supposed to go back into courthouse according to the prison plans. Courthouse, uh, we're working on the foundation, getting that done, that's our next thing. We've got a temporary, we've got a, an emergency grant to fix the foundation of the existing courthouse. And we will be bidding that soon. The other bid can, the, for the courthouse can go out in September, and talking with them, if they get $20 million a year from the state for courthouses, I asked them, is Carls County gonna apply for $4 million? Well, yeah, I guess so. I said, you think we're gonna get $4 million grant out of $20 million when there's Alice and Houston and Sandow and everyone else applying for it? Well, I don't know. So I don't know how they're gonna propose a grant. If they propose a full grant, do we get it? Do they propose a partial grant? We may get enough to do the outside and the windows, and then the next grant would be the next, so that would be, it's either two years or four years before the courthouse be ready, before anyone can move back into the courthouse. I do not know these time schedules.
Well, I just want, I, I am a leader of the Lonesome Four H Club, and I just want to assure my families and my four Hers that you are, I have always told them, you're always welcome at their extension office, I have told fellow farmers and ranchers that, no, that's the answers, if you need something. We use that multiple times, and I just want to assure them that they should not feel uncomfortable at any times if the doors are always open. And that this is just temporary, but our temporary, I hate to see five years down the road and still be here. Thank you.
Hi, morning. I think it all really just boils down to, and what ultimately everybody wants answered is where's the money coming from? And why was, what is the need for it? Is there truly a need for it? Um, and, and the reason, the reason that's being given that while they're, they see kids around town, that they know who these kids are, that is true, if I happen to drive by and see them. But otherwise, I'm just dropping them off at the door, and they definitely will see them. So it is not the same thing, I mean, it truly isn't. I think that needs to be taken into consideration, um, when there are things in the evening that the extension agents do. It's a very poorly lit street. There hasn't been any consideration given to the need for proper lighting, um, I don't know if anyone's really truly working on that. I think it was a really poorly thought out idea, um, it sounds to me like it was an idea over at the other building and the elevator, and there was a reason why that can't happen either. But it just seems like a lot of poorly thought out ideas.
Courtney, how many county meetings do y'all have?
I think that Ms. Moore said earlier, probably the best person to ask would be the extension agent.
Because we had told JB and numerous times if there was other buildings he wanted to use, however he wanted to do it.
What, what are the other buildings?
What, you have a multipurpose room, we have all kinds of buildings and that's still available for use, probably it might be.
Okay, I, I, I can't answer that, I mean, I, I'm not gonna speak, I mean, that would be a discussion y'all would need to have with them.
Okay, we'll have them.
But, I mean, the kids do have council meetings, I know, there are parents that drop their children off and leave their kids for probably an hour at a time. I don't know if the street is lit well enough to do that, I don't think that it makes the kids feel very comfortable, nor does it make the parents feel very comfortable. And I guess we can stand for all day and negotiate on who he said, she said, or whatever it is. But the whole point is, is that I feel like people feel that it's very deceitful, I feel like if there were decisions made, people weren't truly aware of, I think it was poorly thought out, I don't think that, you know, you made a decision about A, but you didn't figure out the consequences whenever it truly went into effect. And, and that's just kind of what I want everyone to take away, is there just seems to be kind of a snowball effect of decisions being made, but what's gonna happen whenever that, that comes into play? Whenever it truly boils down to it, there, there are people that are gonna always want answers, because you, I mean, you truly are there, if you're in public office, you should be, I mean, a public servant to people. And it's not, it's not, if it is for personal reasons, then you should find something else to do, because there are plenty of jobs where you serve yourself, but public office is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, since it was my agenda item, nobody else wants to speak?
The next item on the agenda is for Jaren.
I'll make it.
Shelby. I'm sorry.
She always calls me Robert.
Wait, guys, we haven't adjourned, hold on one second.
James, it's like, you know, again, if there's an issue about having a place to meet where, for the council or other kids, again, would you agree that the annex has that meeting room that is a public building for anybody to use? I mean, it could be. It's, like Courtney says, she's worried if there's an issue about being lit, uh, uh, that area there is a little bit, you know, more lit, it's more lit, but it's, the lighting looks better, you know? The lighting is more secure, I guess, uh, and there's, there's a pull down screen projector, it's like a regular meeting room, I understand you there. So that's one place to have, have a regular meeting best we can, on a one-on-one basis, uh, I understand it's all a little bit concerning. So.
But Shelby, all their stuff would be here and they would have to move it.
He's gonna give the keys to that original building, they have a key here, they monitor the other building.
We'll let JD have a key back.
It's a tax payer issue, it's, safety is a concern, but you've got tax money.
Ms. Moore, there's been so many bills come through here that none of these commissioners have ever seen before, and they.
That's reassuring, that's really reassuring, Judge Shaw.
Oh, I've seen them, I know, okay? So all of a sudden, this big issue of $1,500 or whatever it is to move phone lines, if that's what it is, okay, is minimal compared to some of the bills that come through here.
It is gonna be more than $1,500, Jason, leave us alone.
I have never, I have never, I have never saw Shelby have the floor, did you finish? I'm sorry.
But that was my thing, again, you can talk, you can talk about, uh, taxpayer dollars, you know, if you really get, if you wanna look at, uh, there's a lot of taxpayer dollars being wasted every day in every department.
Let's say you have to do this.
But, but you know what, taxpayer.
Taxpayer dollars, I'll talk with you after this meeting.
Yeah, let's, you do that.
Yeah, I will.
Taxpayer money, we actually had fines and fees and stuff collected, virtually $500 fines, you'd be amazed at what's good then. Thank you, Mr. Dari.
You first and second?
No, no, we haven't had any of that stuff.
I made it, he seconded.
I asked for it, but I think something happened, somebody said something, one of y'all.
One house made it, I got it. Right, I made it, he seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, most are very responsive here.
Don't get in the courthouse out in a minute.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.